Good evening, we'd like to welcome everyone to our November 7th, 2019 City of Palacka Commission Meeting. At this time, we're gonna have our invocation. Reverend Sandra Gilliard here. I don't... I'm sorry. Pastor Long? Do you mind giving us the invocation today? We're gonna put you on the spot, be all so ready. So could you lead us in the pledge? So we're gonna ask that Pastor Long come forward at this time and bless us with the invocation. Thank you, sir.
Let us pray. Gracious everlasting, the God that sit high as your throne, this time is again another time that you have blessed us to be in your presence. For that reason, we take your thank you. Now, Father, we ask that you would bless in everything that the city have put forward to do if it be your holy and righteous will. Bless us now, Father. And if you do it, we will be so careful to give you all the praise and all the glory for you are worthy of it all, realizing that we cannot do anything without you. Therefore, we ask for your direction in this meeting, this gathering at this time as we recognize the young people from each school, oh Father, that have been so gracious. And we ask eternal God that you would bless them after they grow in age, that they will grow in your grace, your wisdom, your knowledge. Again, if you do it, we will be so careful to give you all the praises and all the honor. And then by the same hand.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor. And while Pastor Long sits down, we also want to thank you for the work that you and your church do in this community as it relates to feeding up homeless and individuals throughout the community and just the great service that you provide throughout, and we commend you for your leadership. Let's give him a round of applause. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Commissioner McCaskill?
Here.
All members of present accounted for, and you have a former.
Thank you very much. Has everyone had an opportunity to review minutes?
Motion for approval.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion? Questions called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item one of the agenda, which is public recognition and presentations. First up is our National Hospice and Pedantic Care Month. And children's grief awareness day. I have Mr. Crystal Burke from Haven Hospice here. So with proclamation, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas for forty years Haven has helped provide comfort and dignity to thousands of people in North Florida, allowing them to live their last months, weeks, or days comfortably with people they love, utilizing an interdisciplinary, team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management as a foundation of care. And whereas beyond providing physical treatment, Haven attends the patients' emotional, spiritual, and family needs, and provides family services like respiratory care, and bereavement counseling, and community-based pedantic care, which delivers expertise to improve quality of life and relief from pain, and can be provided at any time during an illness. And whereas every year, 1.5 million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their family receive care from the nation's hospice program and communities throughout the United States including Haven, an advocate and educator about advanced care planning that helps individuals make decisions about the care they want. And whereas the Centers of Medicare and Medicaid Services have pledged to put patients first in all of its programs, including hospice, enduring a coordinated and patient-led approach to care, protecting patient choice, the access to individualized services based on patients' unique care needs and wishes. Now therefore, I terro Hill, Mayor of the City of Palacka, Florida, together with the members of the Palacka City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim, November 2019 as National Hospice and Pedantic Care Awareness Month in the City of Palacka, and we encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, to discuss their end-of-life wishes with their families, and to observe the month with appropriate activities and programs. And witness where I appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palacka, Florida, on the seventh day of November the year of our Lord 2019. Terro Hill Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, Tammy McCaskill, Valentine Commissioners, all entertain a motion.
Motion.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Commissioner Campbell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We want to thank you.
I just want to take a second to, and I apologize because I'm suffering from some allergy issues, but I just want to take a second and thank the city for always letting us come out and do this every year and supporting us. This is our fortieth year, so we're happy to say that we've been in this league for forty years. We're proud to continue to serve the community and the county. So, thank you, everyone.
Well, thank you.
Next up, National Runaway Prevention Month. Cindy Starlin, Lakeisha Mack, CBS Behavioral. Whereas National Runaway Prevention Month began in 2002, and is spearheaded each year by the National Runaway Safeline, NRS, the federally designated national communications system for runaway and homeless youth. Whereas the prevalence of runaway and homelessness among youth is staggering, studies suggesting that every year between 1.6 and 2.8 million youth live on the streets of the United States. Runaway youth are expelled from their home, have experienced abuse and trauma, are involved in foster care systems, are too poor to secure their own basic needs, and may be ineligible or unable to access adequate medical or mental health resources. Whereas children and youth who run away are at increased danger for falling into high-risk situations, including increased risk of human trafficking. Effective programs supporting runaway youth and assisting youth and their families in providing safe and stable homes succeed because partnerships created among families, youth-based advocacy organizations, community-based human services agencies, law enforcement, schools, faith-based organizations, and businesses. And whereas the National Runaway Safeline is sponsoring National Runaway Prevention Month in November to raise awareness of the issues facing runaway and homeless youth, and educate the public about solutions and the role that they can play in ending youth homelessness. Now, therefore, I terro Hill, Mayor of the City of Palacka, Florida, together with the members of the Palacka City Commission, do hereby recognize and endorse November 2019 as National Runaway Prevention Month in the City of Palacka, and urge all citizens to support the effort to increase public awareness about, educate on behalf of, and provide positive and safe alternatives for runaway and homeless youth and their families. And witness where I appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palacka, Florida, on the seventh day of November the year of our Lord 2019. Terro Hill Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, Tammy McCaskill, Valentine Commissioners, all entertain a motion. There's a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Let's give him a round of applause.
We're with CBS Family and Behavior Health Services, and we'd just like to encourage the community. This is CBS's actually fiftieth year as an organization, as a nonprofit organization, and we certainly strive to help the youth here in Putnam County, especially the youth who are experiencing runaway behaviors, because there's so many risk factors associated with runaway, including human trafficking and a number of other serious issues. So, please feel free to contact us if you have any services, and we thank, very thankful to the city for presenting this and proclaiming November's Runaway Month. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, recognition of veterans of armed forces. I'm gonna ask that our newest veteran come forward and join me at this time and help me with this presentation. So let's give a round of applause for our retired veteran, our new city manager, Bill Shanahan, to come forward at this time.
I did not know this was happening.
Mr. Garn, you're also a former military too, right?
Sir.
So if you can join me as well, then I can let you gentlemen help me. Let's give a hand for our editor city manager. So do we have any, are there any veterans of the armed forces here in our audience today?
I saw him salute the flag.
And you guys stand for me and tell us which branch of military you guys serve?
The only branch serving known is the United States Marine Corps. Oh, Tommy Edwards.
Yes, sir.
My name is John Beverly, I agree with him. Guys, it's Marine Corps.
Are there any more veterans in here today?
There's one out here in the lobby, and you might have to get his attention.
How many veterans out here? Any veteran?
It's my way to go. Yep.
Just, just, okay, well, run, 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 from that?
And last but not least, you go ahead and give yours.
I retired as a first sergeant of the United States Army, real military.
And thank you to you, you love us as well. So as we continue on with our celebration for this month, we're gonna have our Veterans' Day celebrations starting on Monday. We'll have the Veterans Parade, and there'll also be a special program down at the riverfront. So starting at 10:00 a.m., if you can, come out and celebrate your veterans, because we want to make sure that we always remember them and the sacrifices that have been made. So again, thank you guys for all that you do and for your service. Student of the Month has been canceled. Commissioner Campbell. So as Commissioner Campbell comes up, we have, I think, the distinct pleasure of having three individuals on this commission who all worked for Putnam District School Board. And so, we want, we want to also recognize them and the work that they do with our youth in this community. Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Borum, Commissioner McCaskill, we thank you guys for the work that you do. But there's also some special people in the audience who are typically hanging around the outside of the hallways, and they never get an opportunity to hear thank you as much as they should. And so our educators who are here today, we want you guys to stand and be recognized, and let's give them a round of applause. Even Mr. Passmore with his forte station. So, next up is our, we want, there's another special group that we always recognize, and that's our family and friends and extended family that's here today, and our parents as well, because it takes some village to raise a child, and there's truly a testament to the support that these kids have with them. There's so many kids who just wish that they had the support that sits in this room today. And so all our, everyone who's here visiting their student and their support, and a family, a family member, a parent, a friend, please stand up at this time so that we can recognize you and tell you thank you. It's always good to see our elected officials out, and it's one of the few times that you get to see a judge and not be nervous. Have you recognized one of the hardest working judges?
Yes.
And truly, one of the chief, the chief judge here, Judge Boeck, will you stand for us? The only time I can ask him to stand. And so now, we're gonna go ahead and move into our Student of the Month celebration. Commissioner Campbell, you want to give the directions today?
So.
We ask that as you come up, only the representative that's being honored and the representative from the school come up. As you come up, get your certificate. We ask that you, curbed by Mr. Garner, he'll stop you so that we'll have enough room for everyone to come up.
And at the end of this process, we'll take, we will take a recess so that everyone can take pictures, and we'll let the Black Million News take a picture to make sure that you guys purchase those newspapers. And so again, we're gonna, we're gonna take that time, so we'll take one group photo, and you guys can come behind the newspaper and take pictures of the group, and then we'll start doing individual photos after that, so we'll make sure that you all have time to commemorate this special moment. And so as we move forward, notice, understand that I will butcher at least three names every time you do this. First up, Browning Pierces Elementary, Valeria Cruz Omberra. I started off with her name. Seal over turf sixth grade center, Lane Goodson. Children's Reading Center Charter School, Fox Edwards. D H Morris School, Christopher Thompson. James L. Long Elementary School, Tatum Wright. Jenkins Middle School, Rick Coens. Did I get it right? I messed it all up. What is it? They got it. I'm o two, I got one more left. From Kelly Street Elementary School, Luke Meredith. From Mellon Elementary School, Jayla Ledbetter. From Mowgli Elementary, Jocelyn Morales. From Palacka High School, Tariel Wong. From Pennant Baptist Academy, Caitlin Boeck. From Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Jordan Beverly. And for less than three, at Putnam Academy, at Putnam Edge High School, Aaliyah Nelson. Commissioner Campbell, any part, any part of words?
Keep up the hard work.
And so guys, we are just extremely proud of you. And again, every time we do this, I want to share something with you, and I share it with the students that come forward, something that I learned as a third grader in this Thomas and the Green's class, many, many, many moons ago, almost forty years ago. And, and we started every day out by saying, "I am somebody. If my mind can't conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody." You guys are somebody special.
Amen.
You're people destined for greatness. We are proud of you. We're proud of the work that you're doing in this community, and we look forward to you guys one day being the leaders of this community and standing here and motivating other young people who come behind you. And so just continue to do the great work that you're doing, and don't let anybody tell you anything any differently. Okay? So we're definitely proud of you. Again, let's give them a round of applause. We were standing in recess, we're gonna take a picture for the newspaper. We're gonna go ahead, we're, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene. Moving on to public comments, we've got, public comments are limited to three minutes. Based upon, there will be no action taken upon the topics that are discussed. Is there anyone here for public comment? I've got one person who's here to do a presentation, that's Eric Levers. Eric Levers from Lifted Spirits and Bait and More. Will you come up at this time? Go ahead.
Yes. Well, this, this is around ten minutes, so. My name is Eric Levers. My wife and I own Lifted Spirits. Babe before, 324 St. John's Avenue, in the side of 108 Miller Road, in our lock-in. We retail e-cigarette and nicotine vaping products and craft beer, and our fifth anniversary is coming next February. I stand for you today to talk about vaping, the teen epidemic in our community. Vaping has been in the media a lot lately, the mysterious lung illness and teen vaping epidemic. It sounds kind of scary, right? This kind of talk brings concerns to Americans and the concerns for our children. Vaping seems to be the devil in the media at the moment, so there's current talk in the media about flavor bans or deep bans vaping altogether. But what is vaping? It is a heating of a solid or liquid to change the state of the material once an aerosol is being inhaled. Vaping is a verb. Many things can be baked, nicotine, vitamins, marijuana, medication, and illicit drugs. Vaping is not just nicotine and e-cigarettes. The recent mysterious vaping illness and deaths has sparked controversy about vaping, about vaping altogether. But the FDA and the CDC have both found that over ninety percent of these cases were caused by black market THC carbamizers or E-joints bought off the street. THC oils have to be thin to be baked. Some of the additives being used in furthest purpose is causing these illnesses. The media continues to headline the words vaping in these cigarettes with, when in fact, the correct terminology for the products causing the illness is TDC carbamizers, or in other words, E-joints. The scary headlines the media produced has put a damper on both the cigarette and the legal marijuana industries. Strange thing about all this, though, is that only the USA has seen a mysterious vaping illness arise, and only in the past few months. The rest of the world is not seeing any of these things happen in their country, and they all vape these cigarettes as well. So let's talk about nicotine e-cigarettes. That's what we sell at Lifted Spirits, besides craft beer, of course. The Royal College physicians of England have reported that vaping is at least ninety-five percent less harmful than traditional cigarettes. See the man. They are currently opening vape shops in the lobbies of hospitals over in the UK, and they have found that vaping has been the most successful method of, for traditional cigarettes. The ingredients contained within a e-cigarette is vegetable glycerin, propylene glycol, and nicotine and flavor. Those are optional. Nicotine can be adjusted so that the user can choose to wean themselves off of the nicotine until they are vaping zero milligrams. We have had several customers do that. That's the exact reason why we opened up here in Palacka, to give our locals an alternative to traditional cigarettes, which we know kill four hundred and eighty thousand Americans per year. If it was about profit, we would have been selling loosely tobacco, cigars, and water pipes as well, but our intentions are to help our community. I quit smoking in 2009 with vaping. It's been a blessing for my family and I. I regret ever making the decision to smoke. It was a hard habit for me to quit, but vaping made it easy for me. I struggled for years with other methods, and vaping, vaping worked for me, as well as millions of other people worldwide. The biggest struggle that the vaping industry faces is the ignorance of people without understanding, especially those who have never smoked a cigarette. I mean, why would a non-smoker ever have the slightest understanding of what being addicted to cigarettes even means? Why would you even have the urge to do deeper research on a product that isn't even part of your daily agenda? As soon as you're told these cigarettes are same or worse than traditional cigarettes by the mainstream media, it's easy to make the assumption that it should be banned. I mean, if you don't smoke, and vaping looks similar to smoking, so it must be banned. You know, the TV told me so, so ban it, right? It'd be like me, an individual, I don't go to the beach. I have more of a dad, I'm a beach bug, saying that, you know, sharks kill and injure people on the coast of Florida every year, so let's ban swimming in the ocean. I mean, I don't swim in the ocean, so why not? It's not part of my agenda. Kind of the same thing. You might not like it, but banning an adult from freedom of choice is not really following American ideology. So I wanted to talk about the Master Settlement Agreement. A lot of people don't know what it is, please Google it. Master Settlement Agreement is an accord reached in November 1998 between the state determined general of forty-six states, five US territories, the District of Columbia, and the five largest cigarette manufacturers in America concerning advertising, marketing, and promotion of cigarettes. In addition, requiring the tobacco industry to pay the settling states billions of dollars annually forever. MSA also imposed restrictions on the sale and marketing cigarettes by participating cigarette manufacturers. So basically, the states receive annual subsidies from the tobacco companies based off the annual tobacco sales forever. This is due to the large amount of smoking illnesses that were occurring with patients that were on state provided insurance or Medicaid. The cost of illnesses superseded the premiums being paid for Medicaid, and states were seeing loss due to the amount of smoking illness occurring in Americans. Vaping caused a fifteen percent decline in tobacco sales in 2015 alone. We're talking about a ninety-eight billion dollar a year history of massive loss to both tobacco in the states. Fifteen of those states have purchased stocks and bonds in anticipation of the predicted amounts of annual tobacco sales, and with tobacco sales declining, that is putting a big hurt on some of the states that are involved in the overspending. In other words, the states sold American souls to Big Tobacco and need the profits from tobacco sales to keep up with the government overspending. They need Americans to smoke cigarettes, it's a catch-22. The MSA agreement is American blood money, and this is why we're not hearing about a cigarette ban at all. It's about money, and they need to get rid of the one product that's actually declining tobacco sales, and that's e-cigarettes. So we got a teen epidemic too. We've seen a rise in teen vaping, we should call it Juuling. The Juul is a little small USB-driven vape device. Juul makes six flavors, but what makes Juul so sought after is the ability to hide it with fifty-milligram nicotine pods they offer. With a small tub, the user receives a larger dose of nicotine, which gives the user a nicotine buzz, or what the kids call a heady. Juul is thirty-five percent owned by Altria or Margarole Cigarette. The majority of the liquids we sell at our shop are three and six-milligram, in comparison to fifty-milligram Juul tub. Juuls are mainly sold in gas stations and department stores. That's where the teens, and that, that, this Juul is the teens' vape choice. Yes, we've seen a rise in teen vaping. And teen vaping been in the same swoop, we've seen a dramatic decrease in teen smoking. If e-cigarettes did not exist, you would still see a high rate of teen smoking occurring. We have a sixteen-year-old daughter ourselves. She has no interest in vaping, and we own the vape shop. The difference is she knows exactly what it is and what it's meant to do because she's educated on what it's meant to do. Lifted Spirits has never sold and never will sell a Juul, or any other vape products that are owned by Big Tobacco. Being that Lifted Spirits is the only vape shop in Putnam County, this tells us that the products that the teens are using in school are not even be able to purchase at our shop. We're small business owners, and we stand by the law. We card hard, we have no intentions of starting habits, especially in teens. We are in business to help local adult smokers choose a less harmful alternative, and the first, first question we always ask for is their ID, next if they smoke. If they don't even smoke, we do our best to talk about the sale. The majority of vape shop owners are owned by small business owners who are just like us with very same intentions. Vaping is making a positive difference in the lives of those who smoke traditional cigarettes and struggle to quit them. And the main reason I wanted to come here before here today is to discuss solutions. What vaping media always sees is ban vape or don't ban. A real solution? No real solutions, both seem extreme to a biased American population, so I came here tonight to propose that Palatka, Putnam County, look at only allowing e-cigarettes and tobacco to be sold in places that have business that are appropriate for the products that have age restrictions for entry into said business. Right now, people can buy e-cigarette products and tobacco in businesses that allow people of all ages to shop there. The products are literally in the face of our teens and youth at gas stations, at general stores. Instead of a full ban on an adult product, wouldn't it make more logical sense to just limit the access? Limit the access, limit the issue. Guns sold at the gun store, marijuana sold at the dispensary, marital vape sold at the adult shop. We already do with several other products, so why not tobacco? Tobacco sold at the smoke shop, vape sold at the vape shop. Keep it niche, keep it controlled. We'll give access to adults, and at the same time, support small business while limiting access to teens. Most of these niche-type shops are owned by small business owners, and if they care, they card. Nobody's been talking about these types of solutions on the mainstream level until just yesterday, when an article came out from the White House, or, or about the White House considering not softening the flavor ban to exempt vape shops, but we still don't know. It's all speculation at this point. And you only hear banned, hear bans on vaping, whatever the media wants to tell you, but why aren't we not banning cigarettes, which kill fifteen, hundred million, fifteen hundred Americans a day? It sounds like a move to protect the Master Settlement Agreement. So why not take a stance and be the leader for a movement that makes more logical sense? We love Palatka and Putnam County, we seek to be a part of the community, community and not part of the issue. We seek for our locals to understand the intentions of our business and to work with us to solve any local issues surrounding our industry and our local youth. Even if you don't smoke, most people know someone who does, and those are the people we're here for. So let's work together on the issues.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions for the Commissioner?
Education for me, I mean.
Seeing none, we definitely.
Would anyone like a copy of what I just referred to?
I would.
Yes, we can give him his triggers for the record. And so, we, we got one, we're passing one. And so again, we definitely thank you for the education, and we thank you for being a business owner here in Putnam County and making the commitment to us. And again, thank you, it's been very educational for us here, and I think you've had some great suggestions, and so we will definitely pay close attention to what you've suggested and have future conversations with you.
I know it's in our mainstream media, I know it hasn't risen here yet, but here I headed off at the pass.
And we, and we definitely hear your passion, and so, we appreciate that.
I'm so sorry, my voice.
No, you don't apologize, don't ever apologize for caring.
I practice it several times.
Do not, do not apologize for caring, that is, that is, that's a great quality. And so again, we appreciate you coming in here and educating the community on, on the processes of what vaping is and what some of the dangers are that we really don't know much about, and so, again, we, again, just thank you for that, let's give them a round Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Moving on to item, item three of the agenda, which is our consent agenda, we have items A through H on our consent agenda. Are there any items that you wish to have removed at this time?
I'd like to have item C removed.
Three C?
We've got, we've got three, removing C. And so, there seems to be a consensus to remove item C from the agenda, are there any other items you wish to have removed at this time?
Motion to accept all other items that's called in C.
Motion on the floor in a second, is there any further discussion? Questions called, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item C, adopt resolution number twenty nineteen R one thirty, authorizing execution of FDOT state-funded grant agreement in the amount of one thou, one million, three hundred two thousand dollars, eight, two thou, I'm not, one million, three hundred, two thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars, the design, construction, and CEI for St. John's Avenue pedestrian and cyclist safety improvements from South Thirteenth Street to South Fifth Street. Can you read the cap, can you read the caption for Mr. Griffin? And just so, and just so you guys know that, Mr. Griffin's gonna come up and talk about it, and that resolution just basically goes to the total streets project that we have and the appropriations that we got from the state. Mr. Griffin, you wanna go ahead and do that after she reads the caption?
The resolution of the City of Palatka, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to Florida Department of Transportation state-funded grant agreement, FPN number four four five seven nine six dash one dash five four dash zero one, for the design, construction, and CEI for St. John's Avenue pedestrian and cyclist safety improvements from South Thirteenth to South Fifth Street in Palatka, Florida.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second for discussion purposes only. Mr. Griffin?
Jonathan Gerda, Public Works Director. We did address some concerns by emails of the business owners today. I'll just give a brief overview of the project and then answer any questions you may have or any concerns. So this project is a one-point-three-million-dollar appropriation. Total project cost is around two-point-six million. The matching funds are the Florida Department of Environmental Protection state revolving loan funds for the potable replacement, which is a, a component of this total streets gate. The project, in theory, will consist of milling and resurfacing of St. John's Avenue from Thirteenth Street across CSX corridor to Fifth Street, some sidewalk improvements, landscaping, lighting, pedestrian cyclist enhancements, maybe some intersection treatments. We have started the charrette process with the public input process. We held our first session at the Craft Beer Festival, got a lot of great input. We recently talked to downtown Palatka representatives, they're setting up a meeting for later this month for us to seek some input feedback on this. I will say that staff is aware that construction, if done in the typical manners, as we typically do, can be detrimental to business. This project is, the estimates are high, as well as the timeline is longer than usual because we anticipate having to do this project a little bit differently than how we typically do work. We are, and I'll read from my notes that I have in my email here, see, these are some of the options that we're proposing to kind of ease the pain on downtown. Milling and resurfacing St. John's Avenue in sections at night, this will allow for milling and resurfacing to take place after business hours, and for the road to be in place the next morning. Removal and replacement of sidewalk in small sections at night, this will allow for sidewalks to be removed and replaced within forty-eight hours. Phasing of construction in two to three block sections over a two-year period, larger areas of equipment excavation and barricades deter pedestrians and consumers from visiting an area. For that reason, construction areas are to be smaller and restored as the contractor moves through the area, and staging of equipment, materials shoved off-site to minimize the appearance of the construction project. Consideration of installing potable lines by a directional board to minimize excavation, as well as cleanup of areas daily as the subcontractors move through the area. All of these items will add to the cost and time of the project, and this is reflected in the scheduling costs. However, we believe paying premium to minimize the impacts to the businesses necessary. Do you have any questions?
What about parking? And that, would it affect, any parking does?
No, ma'am. I believe that some of the renderings that we included of the Eleventh Street corridor in the appropriations requests led to that confusion. There were two images in there that include the Eleventh Street transportation corridor, so I apologize for that.
Any other questions?
Well, I mean, I think you addressed that, the one issue as it related to the, the time in which you would be, I guess, doing the, the road improvements or infrastructure improvements in front of the business, that the work will be done after, after business hours, correct?
That's what we're gonna write in the contract document, the specification, yes, sir.
And will it be done in small, small sections?
We're going to, clearly articulate that in the specifications and probably bring it to their attention in the pre-meeting meeting, so that any contractors that are bidding are aware that there will be these restrictions placed on their work activities.
I think the issue where it says, I guess, a standpoint of.
Commissioner, can you speak up just a little bit?
Yeah, this, contract performance in terms of, if, because it's twenty-twenty-three that they will complete it by June twenty-twenty-three. So what happens if they, if there's a delay outside of, something that's outside of control, like, what, what would happen if, if there, I don't see anything in the contract, any of the two contract forms, and what would happen if the delay goes beyond that, because my understanding of, if it goes beyond June twenty-twenty-three, that the state is not obligated to pay any, they're gonna withdraw, they don't have to pay any more funds, so that's a concern.
We always keep constant communication with our funding agencies, they like to know those issues well ahead of time. If we do encounter unforeseen, they're one of our first calls, so they're aware that we may have to ask for an extension. I will tell you that the reason that we pushed this one out so far is because we wanna make sure that we leave ourselves enough time to accommodate the businesses and to address any unforeseen. But we do have good partners at the state level and at the local level that have been funding a lot of these projects, and I think as long as we have valid reasons, we'll work on this, sir.
And stick in, and extension's trying to be a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Lighting, lighting, there was another issue around lighting, the current lighting now, I guess, so there's lighting issue as it relates to some of the work that's been done already, and then we'll have additional work going forward. So how would we make sure that proper lighting is done now? I understand that there was some issue there relating to somebody being approached by a stranger and with an attempt to.
So this is separate from this project, but the contractor did hit some unmarked electrical lines of the city's, lines that we were not aware that were installed there. It did disconnect the power to approximately three blocks of dead electric light in St. John's Avenue. We were able to restore power to about ninety-nine percent of the light on the north side of St. John's Avenue. We have worked for power light contractor county, and we have a contractor that has an open purchase order, they're beginning work next week, we've got confirmation today that the permit was released in the county, and that they also have all material on site. I do expect those lights to be functional prior to the Christmas parade.
Well, and the Christmas parade is.
It's three weeks.
In the meantime, so, so we have a really, a big dead section of no lights.
Can we, can we just, can we stay on the, on the, on what we got right now for this motion on this, and then we can, we can address it once he does additional reports at the end? I just wanna try to keep us on task. Any other questions that pertains to the, to item three C?
I just wanna know, because I thought there would have been greater presence here of downtown merchants, like I got phone calls, so I'm assuming that your email.
Addressed the issue.
Addressed the issue there.
Yeah, it was actually a good opportunity to start a dialogue about, I need to set up a one of those public meetings for the downtown merchants, and their tentative dates after November eighteenth at six PM, so we're ready to go and just listen and talk to them, and hope to have a couple follow-up conversations as well.
Well, you know why they're so anxious, 'cause we had work done in three blocks years ago, and the merchants felt like they were devastated as to their business. For some strange reason, we can go to big cities and park a car and walk ten blocks and not complain, but here in town, you're parking the door, you can't go to the store, so maybe we need to remind them that. If they go out of town, they will, and that we're working hard, we understand.
Any other questions as it pertains to, what, item three C?
Oh, one last thing, the, the one-point-three revolving, that other one-point-three, that we're gonna make a loan out to, and that's for the portable line?
Yes, sir.
That one, that one. That's from the, that's, that's, the one-point-three came from, there's one-point-three coming from the state, and then the, the total project cost is.
Two-six.
Two-six in tot, in totality, and that includes the portable line, water, portable water lines and everything else.
That one-point-three is a portion of the seven-point-six that we received from the state.
Okay.
Are we gonna put, are we gonna put electric light wiring underground at that time?
We're open to any suggestions. Commissioner, if you'd like to come up to one of the meetings, I could, we could try incorporate it into the design.
That might be something we need to look at, because a lot of places are doing it now, when they have storms hit, then people aren't, without lights, they still have lights functioning.
There's a fifty-fifty thing with the underground versus overhead, so there's, you gotta, I think J A, well Jacksonville tried it, and they see the astronomical costs associated with that, so I think they kinda backed up, but.
Okay, well, why they would.
Any more questions about, any more questions about vaping?
That's it.
Are there any more questions about vaping at this point? Seeing none, we're gonna close discussion, we're gonna call the question on this matter. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. There would definitely be additional conversation throughout, it's a total streets project. There has been community input already by way of the maps that were put out by Ayers and Associates during the beer, the Craft Beer Festival, and there will be continuous meetings throughout. We had the first one scheduled a few weeks ago, and we had to change it because of craft beer, so we'll continually put them out. And so you guys will definitely have all the opportunity in the world to give additional input, as well as meet with Mr. Griffin to make sure that all the concerns are met. So again, thank you on that, Mr. Griffin. Moving forward to item four, order submitting police pension multiplier to the, to correct the base multiplier, first reading, this is a housekeeping matter.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, revising the code of ordinances of the City of Palatka, Florida, by revising section two dash two-five-zero point one-eight-five key, police officer benefit group pension amount formula, and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor in a second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Questions called by Vice Mayor Brown, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item five of the agenda, ordinance extending the two thousand eight economic recovery and incentive program, which placed a moratorium on collection impact fees adopted in two thousand seven for a period not to exceed two years, to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, second reading for adoption.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, amending City of Palatka ordinance number zero eight dash two zero, the City of Palatka, two thousand eight economic recovery and incentive program, extending the suspension of collection of the city's parks and recreation facilities impact fees, fire rescue impact days, road impact fees, and law enforcement impact fees for a period not to exceed two years, providing for notice of impact fee rates upon expiration of the suspension period and/or reinstatement of collection of suspended impact fees, whichever comes first, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Questions called by Commissioner McCaskill, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item six, discussion of nominal lease renewals expiring December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Item A is keep putting a beautiful lease on office space at two zero five North Second Street, and item B is Palatka Art League's lease on the Tillman House. Just to kinda put all this in perspective, I think one of the things that we've talked about over the course of the last few years is looking at how we're utilizing space that the city owns, and are we getting the highest and best use of the space, and reviewing contracts that have been in place. What we're finding with nominal leases is, we found some situations where even with a nominal lease in place, we were still maintaining the property. We were maintaining the property, accumulating costs based upon certain things that were in place. In some cases, we've got property that has substantial value. For example, the Tillman House is a waterfront property. It's a property with a river view, it's a historic home, we're seeing value start to increase within the historic district, and yet we leased that property for a dollar per year, and questions have to, and my question is, is that the highest and best use? We've seen that property be a disrepair, we've seen some grants be in place, I think the Art League does a great job at what they do, but is that a, are we taking, but my question always is, are we taking city property and giving it to someone to run a retail business? Or are there other things that are out there? And so, we've got to look at that stuff to figure out where we are, and that's, and that's what happens. So, yeah, there's some benefit to some of the programming and things that happen, but at the same time, we have to look at it from the perspective of, if we have a half-million-dollar piece of property, or a three-hundred-thousand-dollar piece of property that we're leasing for a dollar, and still having to do maintenance on that property. or a three hundred thousand dollar piece of property that we're leasing for a dollar and still having to do maintenance on that property, then why are we leasing it? And that's just an example. The Laramie Art Center could be an example. There are several examples of properties that we have throughout where we find ourselves continually paying a bill for something that we're doing under the auspices of goodwill. Uh, we've recently seen organizations who historically have not been able to foot the bill or pay rent while having nominal leases for a number of years on city property. But as soon as their lease ended, they were going, they went to other businesses where they actually rented property. Uh, and so we've seen those things happen, um, where they've gone to, and they, and they actually have gone to other city-owned properties and pay rent to an agency that's not the city, an organization that's not the city. So we have to make sure that we're conscious about what we're doing. We want to have a discussion on this so that we can look at those things and figure out what direction the commission wants to go in. Um, for example, keep putting them beautiful, um, is in the annex building and their lease is coming up. And what we did is we gave the lease renewals that are coming up on December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. And keep putting them beautiful, um, its lease comes up for renewal and it's item A. And so under the K P B, um, agreement, you guys have had, had an opportunity to look at it. And we know that they help us, um, out with certain services. We start dealing with blight, they do the countywide cleanup. So they've also provided some grant assistance as it related to some of the projects, um, that were there historically. Um, and I think this commission has to decide whether we're gonna renew that lease or provide notice that there won't be a renewed, a lease renewal. And in most cases, our leases provide for sixty day notice. It's sixty days at any point. And so let me look at K P Bs just to make sure. And this lease terminates upon the belief that the lease may be terminated. The term says this lease may be terminated if and unless for sole discretion, the lessee ceases to serve the purpose which the lesser determines to be public in nature. And so this is strictly based upon a public in nature service. And in our second lease. Same order. So we find ourselves in both those situations. Uh, can someone tell me exactly what's, what public, what's the public service that the Art League provides? Yeah. You can do, you don't, you can do it for my dear if you want.
Okay, the Palatka Art League holds their Christmas house every year. They bring a seven thousand people plus into downtown Palatka that not only shop the Christmas house, but they also shop downtown. It's their publicity for the city. The Art League is nonprofit and the money that they get from their sales goes into the up people's house. In previous years, when we had a law transfer lease on the house, they got grants and they were able to, we had the house. In recent years, they've only had a one-year grant, I mean, a one-year lease and they have not been able to get grants. We have the house. And times passed, they take the house, they've done a lot of things to it. And they bring their good things to Palatka, they're good advertising and they bring people downtown. I don't think any other business can claim they bring seven thousand people down at one, during one season.
The Christmas, what's the, the Christmas house?
House of where they, during the month before Christmas and about the two weeks after. They have crafts they sell that are related to Christmas, like decorations. Uh, they have a special decoration they sell every year that has one of the historic areas of Palatka, like the Bronson House on it or Melon School, or one year they had the Tillman House, they sell those, those are very, very collectible. Uh, it's a Christmas tree ornament, but they, they sell the crafts of local artists at the house. And they're sold at Christmas time as gifts and their, the, the gifts are geared around the Christmas theme.
And what about the other ten months?
The other ten months, they hold meetings, it's a public, it's a nonprofit organization. They hold public meetings that are open to the public. They also give art lessons.
You can fill it out later on, you don't fill it out right now, just, you can come up, just give me some information to help me. I know, Ms. Lane, she's, she's tag team. And we, we know you.
They will tag team you. Anyway, they, they do a lot of good work. I was in, I was in the Art League years ago when it was first formed and I've done it for several years. Uh, it's a good organization and it helps bring things to Palatka, helps people bring downtown and it is a destination. In addition, they have art exhibits down there and you can go down there during the day or during the weekend, you can see the art exhibits, arts and crafts exhibits.
Okay.
Actually, the Christmas house opens tomorrow night and will run for about six weeks. They do during the summer have classes that are free and open to the public. They bring kids in who would not ordinarily get an opportunity to do those kind of programs. Um, Marshall Lane, two tennis, four spark drives, excuse me.
And electric kitchens on the same park.
Different address. Uh, I am currently president of the Platte County Historical Society. We, of course, use the Bronson Mahollan House. Um, I think this is a discussion you should have, but I think you should have the presidents and other people from these different organizations here. We can tell you some of the things that are done and we can give you some figures about what we bring in. Oddly enough today, I am walking down to pick up my newspaper and two ladies in a very nice car stop in my neighborhood and say, could you tell us the history? And they tell me about a house on St. John's Avenue. Uh, some of you know it is the old Turk House, the old Dava House. Anyway, they are up here from Ocala, they're from the villages. They are coming back with a group who we will give a tour, special for them, to the Bronson Mahollan House. Part of what brings people to Palatka are those amenities. Local people also come to the Bronson Mahollan House. They make use of the Palatka Art League, the Tillman House. Uh, they make use of the train depot coming from the museum there. All of those things are those extras that we give people to come to make this a place they look at and go, I might want to live here instead of Ocala or St. Augustine or whatever. Look what this community does and look what they give back to the citizens. The, uh, I know more about the Bronson Mahollan House. We, for instance, do tours volunteer basis and we do them for free. Now, people do give donations and as y'all know, the, that particular house, the, uh, city owns the house and the land, we own the contents. So the money we get goes to do refurbishing. We've done repairs inside the house and done other things, but the city, you know, does a lot of maintenance. We, on the other hand, do maintenance as well. Um, I think before you had this conversation, you need to have information and you need to let us, various groups, explain to you the positive things that all these houses do and the things that give back to the community. Um, the, we do a couple of things every year. Shoot, Saturday night, we had a movie, Freak. Creature of the Blackwood film in Hartley and Putnam County. You know, it turned into a pretty fun thing and we're talking about doing it again and again.
That was at the Tillman House?
Yeah, no, I think Bronson.
I'm just trying to make sure we're talking about the right house.
I'm sorry.
I'm still talking about the Tillman House.
You're right. And I'm going back to the Tillman House. I'm just trying to say that the Tillman House does do the art programs they do. Yes, they have a commercial function, but the money they raise, part of that goes into maintaining the house. They got Florida Pest Control to tend the house this year and take care of a termite problem. And yes, part of their problem has been because they do not have a longer-term lease. Uh, when you're trying to get grants from, from government, y'all know they want to hear, uh, well, how long are you gonna be there? Are you leaving next month? I have listened for years, people on the commission, some people on the commission trying to tear down that house, trying to cut down trees, turn it into parking. It would be better to have work boat trailers there. Really and truly, we need to look beyond very short-term measures like that. I appreciate your letting me have the time to talk.
How long has the Tillman, how long has Art League been in the Tillman House?
About fifty years, I would think.
Not quite, it's been since I got here.
That's thirty-six years. I'm closer to right than you are, but I'm.
No, I'm gonna tell you why. I know because the function was to purchase the house, um, for later parking that you just brought up. And our city manager at that time did not want to spend the money to tear it down. So the Art League people came in and asked for the building and we said, okay, until we get ready to do whatever. It's been so long that people probably forgot that, but it, it's been a good thirty-some years probably.
All right, um.
If you sell, selling places like that though, in the long term, is short-term.
Was that the, I don't think the conversation of selling ever came up, but I mean.
Well, you were saying, here is this beautiful piece of property on the riverfront and, uh, you know, and it is beautiful.
So, anyway, I appreciate your information. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Um, Mr. Shanahan, can you do a cost-benefit analysis on our nominal leases to figure out? Uh, and maybe give us a report back which tells us if the city, for lack of any term, term is, is getting, if the city and the public is getting a true benefit from the nominal leases that are in place with the properties that are, that we have?
We can do that, yes, sir.
Any other comments from the commission?
Table, yeah, number six until we can get information.
It's a discussion item. It's, 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 it's strictly for discussion. And then the first thing is, I, I want to know, my concern has strictly been, we've got a lot of properties out there that people are making money off of. And the city is paying cost to maintain properties that other folks are receiving financial benefits from. And then we find ourselves with GoFundMe pages, we find ourselves with all these other things that are out there where they're saying, oh, we can't, you know, we can't afford to maintain the property. And then the property ends up being a disrepair and there's, uh, additional costs that are associated. And in some cases, it's just embarrassing. So, um, that's the other piece of the puzzle. And I'll say the stuff that may not be popular because at the end of the day, um, if you've been selling stuff for fifty years, then I don't see how you can't pay to get something in it. But that's a conversation for a different day.
I just have a question with the lease coming up, um, for the Keith Putnam. Um, what are we planning on doing with regards to that? Because a decision would have to be made or we would have to let them know something, being that December thirty-first, they will be out and we meet one more time?
Keep, keep putting them beautiful, in my opinion, keep putting them beautiful occupies a small office space inside of the annex building. Um, they're continuously in partnership with the city on programs, um, to deal with blight. Um, they've got a new coordinator who's in place right now and she's been working pretty closely, um, with the city on some projects. Um, prior to that, there had been a bit of a distancing from the, the last person who was there and they didn't really last very long. We know historically with Marshall Marinella, when she was there, um, K P B was very instrumental in what we did with Palatka Pride. Um, in many cases, they provided the equipment and they provided the foundation for what's kind of grown from the Palatka Pride projects. So I, I, I think the relationship with Keith Putnam Beautiful is, it's kind of a no-brainer when it comes to, um, them occupying an office compared to, um, a building. And it's an office that, and it's a building that's pretty, that's a city building that's, that's vacant and in need of repairs. Anybody else?
I agree with this, same sentiments.
So.
So that means we're gonna get a full list, or we're gonna get a full list of everything that we have and, um, review it and you do your analysis.
And we'll start with the ones closest to being done, to end and then work our way down. Yes, sir.
Council, you got anything?
No.
Anybody else? Okay, so we'll get that and then we'll, we'll bring this back and, um, I'm probably here at workshop, but we'll keep moving forward because the conversations have to happen. Because at the end of the day, we've got to be good stewards of the property that we have. And I don't want to fix it if somebody else is making money off of it and we're not receiving any of the revenues. Because if we're giving it to you for a dollar, then we should be the ones recouping the revenues. Um, or at least some portion of those revenues. Um, and so that's just food for thought as we start to move forward and create our policies on these new leases. Moving forward to our city manager administrative reports. Mr. Griffith, you got anything in the back?
Uh, we distributed the project update. If there's any questions about specific projects, I can address those.
Anyone have any questions on the project list?
My street is looking much better. I don't have leg property anymore.
Just a short amount of time, six months.
Landscaping.
Uh, kidding, uh, they're gonna do the final paving on Monday was the word today, uh, barring from, uh, weather changes.
Sure, Laurel.
Landscaping, we've made a request of F D O T. Obviously, they're gonna saw the work here when they complete it, uh, but we have, uh, made a request of D O T to see if we can get the application project along that form.
I just want to know, cause they took at least three trees from the front of my house. And are they gonna put them back or do I need to make some effort to do that?
It'll take some time for them to grow.
Not if I can get them big enough, I may get somebody to give me a big tree.
They will not be putting them back under this phase, no matter.
Okay, so I need to be looking for something, okay.
You can work with me on that, I'll help you with it.
Okay.
All right.
What's the deal with short Laurel?
Our resident court, court of courtless.
Short Laurel or short grill?
Whatever, street, is that correct for you?
Short Laurel's gone.
I mean, it's.
Short grill.
Yes, um, so we're working with, uh, that contractor for C's to line up the asphalt, uh, final, uh, paving of that road. We were hoping we were gonna be able to time at the same time Halifax did Ninth Street, but that's not gonna work out. Um, we've got some issues with subcontractor, uh, doing the concrete work. Uh, we haven't satisfied with some of the previous work they've done. So they're trying to look into their subcontractor that is satisfactory to us. I want to make sure that the curbing, they do have to replace it on their corridor. Looks good for what we're paying for, uh, hopefully within the next month and a half, sir.
This show, I'll tell you, I got trucking, it would make me feel like I'm just blacked out.
But it sure is slowing people down.
Oh, yeah.
Listen, it's, it's bad. It's bad when you go slow. It's bad when you go slow. So I'll join the gang on that. But, but there is no progress without struggle, right?
On all the, you, you got a number of projects going across the city, you got like a number of open projects. Are you able to handle all of those, I mean, with good, uh, oversight? The number, or is, or are they, is there anybody else assisting you with some of the oversight?
Sir, we have, uh, continuing service contracts, uh, with a number of engineers. Uh, the engineers that we employ, we pay them for the construction inspection. Uh, they are out of town, they do get down here once or twice a week. Uh, so we do end up building a lot of the emergency calls and things that we see when we're just going to the project area weekly. Uh, we do our best. Uh, I will tell you, um, if this does keep up and we continue to kind of build upon our success with capital improvement plan on an annual basis, we will probably need to look at bringing someone out on to, to assist the additional projects. Uh, it's just, uh, it's a good position to be in though, it really is, yeah.
In-house engineer, construction manager. So it's been a conversation that we've been having and looking at numbers. Um, so yeah, it's, there are a lot of projects here and, uh, interestingly enough, there are a lot of new breaks that make new projects, right? So that's a conversation for a different day, so it never stops. But we are a little further ahead than we were when we started out in eighteen nine, what was it, eighteen eighty-six? So we're a little further ahead now. We've got about thirty percent of this city under construction, so we're moving forward. Um, Mr. Yew. It's about that time of the year for you, right?
Real quick, I'll just tell everybody that, uh, planning has begun for our tenth annual fly-in. So, uh, free bonfire party, Jonathan, uh, commissioners, you know, get ready to give until it hurts. As we prepare for this thing, uh, uh, we got verbal commitment, uh, vast approach to become part of this thing this year. Hopefully step in the right direction, but it's January twenty-fifth, Saturday to January twenty-fifth.
Yeah, uh, John needs some help him with himself. The board is concerned, uh, he has a big thing coming up, it's getting bigger and bigger. And he had somebody last year that's no longer with him. If it's possible for us to give him, um, some money or something so that he can have an additional person to help him get it set up. And work, whatever, any way we can, it's, it's much needed. Um, he's done a terrific job for us, but it's a little bit more than a one-man job.
And, and the gentleman you're talking about, uh, took some corporate knowledge from us. It was, uh, Andy Ruskin, he was a retired Navy, uh, uh, flight engineer from the three of Jacksonville. Former Navy E-eight, uh, he retired again. He, he will help on a limited basis and certainly the day of if he here. But last year he was here to kind of, uh, support.
You're asking for additional help with the, with the fly-in itself, like a coordinator?
And Andy worked for us last year and, and the city authorized me to work him an additional twenty hours a week on the fly-in. I think during October and November, uh, just, uh, we're in the process of hiring and replacement. We've had, found a place for him.
See the city manager.
So, we'll, we'll talk back. Thank, thank you, thank you.
Good job, appreciate that, Mr. Brown.
Thank you very much. January twenty. Thank you very much. January twenty-fifth.
They'll work it up. Okay, thank you. Um, Captain?
Sir?
You got anything for us today?
No, sir.
Uh, Chief Shaw?
Glad you asked, sir. Yes, sir. Squirming in my seat waiting to get up here. I know you can tell by looking on face. Chief Shaw, black police department. Uh, I want to start off just by saying, we've been having issues with Thirteenth Street, uh, Thirteenth where it approaches to Saint John's Avenue. We've had a number of different accidents. Uh, we've met with myself, uh, Chief Grimes, and, uh, Public Works, uh, Jonathan Griffin. I was so in awe of you standing up here looking so, like, speaking, uh, lost track of the man.
His speeches get long.
Our, our findings with Thirteenth Street is we have now, uh, input some rumble strips. Uh, we did some temporary fixes. We put the sign up, uh, we put a police car hoping to slow them down. We did have one accident after that was done. Uh, we have now installed rumble sticks, and hopefully, uh, they will, um, begin to slow down and stop at the stop sign. We are monitoring it very heavily, and, um, the changes hopefully will, uh, bring out positive results.
Just let Jonathan monimize like he did Short Grill?
That's right.
That will do it. Are you going to put, uh, you're going to put Captain Williams out there on his motorcycle?
We have, we have been doing some additional, um, traffic calming, uh, measures, um, to attempt to address the issue, yes, sir. Uh, the other, uh, topics I want to bring, bring up is one, was trunk retreat, which was a fabulous event. Very well, very successful. Thank you for all of you who attended. Um, we gave out tons of candy to, um, several thousand, uh, citizens within the city.
And again, who had the most fun?
Well, I was not, I was on the opposite side this year of Commissioner Bore, but I do want to say I had individuals coming back saying that, um, Commissioner Bore needed candy. So, uh, I believe Commissioner Bore had the most fun, man. But again, thank you all for attending with that.
What was your account?
I'm sorry. Uh, we didn't have an official count. We did some things a little bit differently this year. So our counter, who was, uh, unable to attend, we didn't get the official count, which is, uh, was sad for us. But I can tell you this, the line was packed, uh, throughout the entire event, and our guestimation was over three, three thousand people.
And I'm sure Mr. Parsons had a count on who, how many kids shot basketballs.
Yeah, I'll count the dents in the roof of my truck. You're a brave man.
But, yeah, it was a great event, as well as, um, Boo on Avenue. They were both great events, and we want to thank the, the downtown merchants, uh, as well as, um, Revitalize for putting, Revitalize and DPI for putting that on. It was just a great event.
And then this morning, the last bit, let me share some good news. This morning, we finished up our accreditation. Uh, and the assessors, um, awarded us, uh, basically letting us know that we will be, they will be nominating us to receive full accreditation in February. So we passed our, uh, accreditation.
Same. That means your time is up. So did you, did you match your last score?
That is yet to be seen. Uh, I would say we are, we can get no less than a ninety-nine point nine percent. We may still hit a hundred.
So, Mr. Shanahan, you got a chance to, to kind of see that as well?
I did. I went there, and I've got to tell you, I've been to quite a few of them at different places, a- and I have never heard higher praise than that was given to your police department, and more important than the praise, to me, and more important than the technical expertise that you showed, is the way they bragged about you all being family and having each other's back and looking after each other, a- and being an assist to each other, and that's what makes a great police department. And, and so I thank you for what you've done, because it all starts with you.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, staff worked very hard, uh, worked tirelessly, and I was pleased with the results that came from the assessment.
Got anything else, chief? Saturday, you got an event?
Saturday?
At the baseball field.
Uh, yes, sir. Saturday, we will be hosting, uh, actually, Mayor, I think I've spent too much time with you.
No, go ahead. You're doing, you're doing well. You're doing well.
All right, well, then Saturday, we will be doing our baseball camp. Uh, we have a number of different youth. Um, actually, we, we exceeded the number that we wanted to offer us, so, um, uh, we're looking forward to that, uh, setting off, uh, our baseball season, um, throwing out the information, having a wonderful camp first, and then from there, uh, being able to push out all information for our baseball and the start of, of our recreation. We have cheerleading, uh, in place right now. Cheerleading for Recreation will be, uh, partnering with our Pally Basketball League, which will be starting up in December. It is currently, they are currently practicing now, and, uh, basketball, again, starts up in December, so there'll be, uh, one big program to kick off. Then we'll be preparing to kick off baseball as well. Then we'll be working, uh, in partnership to make sure that, uh, event is, is a wonderful, or program is a wonderful opportunity for not only the city, but the residents, citizens of the city.
Also, corporate kickball is the other program that, uh, they're kicking off as a team-building exercise for, um, any, uh, local entities like Revitalize or DPI who may want to participate in that. Just get with Eddie Cutright or Joe Pound. As they do those things, they even want the commission to put, put a team together, but I told them that Ms. Brown kicks the ball too hard, so, um,
I'm the goalie.
And so we're gonna, um, they don't have a goalie in kickball.
That would have been an active.
But we can, but we're gonna, but I think it's going to be a great, it's going to be a great team exercise. So there are challenges that have been put out between departments as well to participate in that. The fire department, Duck and the police department, but we'll talk about that later. So, um, anything else, chief?
I don't want to hurt their feelings, sir.
No, sir, there's nothing else.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, very much. Mr. Holmes?
Nothing.
Ms. Driggers? Ms. Correa? Revitalize?
Now, we, we do have some good news now, uh, coming up. Um, the Northeast Florida Regional Council, um, nominated, and we were awarded, uh, Trail Towns Quality of Life Award, so that's coming up on December.
We got to see you the mic to do that, so that everybody can hear it. She's got seniority. She's bullying me.
Robbie Correa, nineteen Dodge Street. Anyway, we just got word from the Northeast Florida Regional Council that Trail Towns Palacca was nominated for and awarded a quality of life award, so that, that will actually happen on December fifth.
And, uh, let's see, and we definitely want to thank you guys for your volunteering this weekend and the work that you did downtown, um, as we dealt with some of the cornstalks and some of the other things that were there. And so again, we want to thank you ladies for the work that you did this weekend. So again, thank you for volunteering and always keeping Palaca beautiful. Mr. Holmes?
Nothing.
Ms. Driggers? Mr. Garner?
Well, I would just like to say that it's been a distinct pleasure working with you all, and, uh, city manager and I have worked out of, hopefully, a plan to, you know, ease out here about that twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth of, uh, November, or working some days that he's not going to be here, and helping cover, and also, uh, complying with the agreement that we signed when I came on, and, uh, I just, uh, like, wish you the best, and I, and like I told you, I got here, you, you, you've got a great operation going, and I just want to see it continue, and, uh, and I'll be back to Palacca. I mean, I, I've never been here before, but I'll sure be best in Palacca, because I've made some improvements here, and I appreciate all, all the, all the support you, you've given me.
Why don't you drink the water? You're here. All right, so we're good. So definitely, we appreciate you, and we thank you for your service as well. And so we'll, you'll be hanging out with us up until Thanksgiving time, so we definitely appreciate you, and again, thank you for the work that you did for the city of Palacca as well. So let's give them a round of applause. And now to the guy, everybody wants to hear a talk. Um, Mr. Shanahan, welcome to Palacca. It's your first meeting.
Thank you. I guess I need to start this just by thanking you all for giving me the opportunity to serve the city. Don't take that lightly, and I'm appreciative to see you, wishing you great things here. Um, want to talk about my plans right now for the next hundred days, because it, it takes a little bit of work to get up and running. And, uh, so with this, I came here on the fourth, so I have ninety-six days to go. And, uh, so basically, what I want to do for, for the next ninety-six days, number one, which we've already started, is keep, which is to convince Commissioner by himself, or herself. A- and I want to talk about goals, priorities, expectations. I want to know what's the best way to communicate with all of you as a group and as individually. Um, I want to know what the, a successful first year will look like, because I think that's important. And I want to build trust between the commissioners and the city manager, because without trust, then I don't really be here as a group. Uh, I want to be with all the employees, employees. I want to start with the, um, department heads. I want to, bring whoever they need there, and I want to talk about some of those same things. I want them to know what the expectations, the vision and the metrics of those expectations. Uh, I want to conduct interviews at their work centers, because I want to see what they're doing, and I want them to know that I'm learning the country where they are, because we all talk the same thing. I want to have them identify goals for their departments and see how they relate to the goals for the city itself. Uh, I want, I want them to ask, answer the question I've already asked it to, to most of them, is if you were king of the world for one day, and you could make one change for this city, what would it be? And, and I think that's, that's important. I want to solicit input from them. I want them to know that I'm not perfect. I wish I was. I wish I got everything right, but they are the experts in their areas, and, and if I'm going in the wrong direction, they need to pull me back, and, and we are the team. Any promises made will be fulfilled, and, and I want them to know that honesty and integrity is the way we're going to start from the top and going all the way down. And I want to build trust between employees and the city manager. They need to know that they can trust me. Then I want to reach out while we're doing, and I know this is basically going at the same time, we're going to start this. I want to reach out to other local governments, city organizations, citizens, and even the state. And I want to know what they think of us and why they think it. I want to know the good things, and I want to know the not-so-good things, because that's how you, you fix things. I want to ID part, part, partnership possibilities. Uh, I want to review ongoing partnerships to make sure they do what they're supposed to do. And I want to build trust between the local governments, the city organizations, the state, with the city, because it's not just me, it's the whole city. Uh, media, I want to be with the media. I want to have an open line of communication. I want you all to be a part of our team. And, and that means when things happen, I want to make sure that you know about it after my commission, commission of this comes first. But once we've done that, I want, I want the information to go to you. I want you to know we're going to bring to you good news and bad news, and we're not going to hide any of it. We open, a- and if we've got that sort of relationship, when the good stuff is out there, you want to come out after too. So the work for all of us, I want to meet with the school district, then see if we can identify and address common areas of concern. See what we can do to help each other. We need to be a team. At the end of all of this, hopefully, I will have collected enough information to identify goals and objectives. I will sit down with our department heads and staff, and we'll go through this, and we'll come up with some type of workshop with the commission, and we will bring that information to you, and then if you're on board with it, then we will come up with a schedule of events, and how we're going to get there, what it's going to cost, and we're going to move forward with it. So that's basically my plans for the next hundred days, plus the day-to-day activities and things like that.
Any questions?
Thank you so much, and again, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. So Mr. Shanahan's hit the ground rolling, and, um, we're looking forward to hearing back from you over the course of this time, and for everyone to get an opportunity to share. Mr. Campbell has, has, um, passed on his, uh, let me stop. Go ahead. You got anything for us today? You passed? You sure?
I don't pass. I don't have anything to say. So nobody else can pick up that time.
Vice Mayor?
I just would like to say thank you for all the love we got for my family and me during the loss of my son. I couldn't have felt more well-loved and thought about than it, and I had total support here of my commission, which I will never forget. Even my, even my attorney brought me, he fed me, so, um, I just want to say thanks, and I'm happy to see Mr. Shanahan hit the ground running, because we're a running group, and I got tennis shoes on, Mr. Shanahan. You got to keep up. Thank you. That's it.
Ms. Brown, we just want to say that, you know, we love you, and there's been a lot of tragedy, um, that has gone on up here on this dais, and, um, we've all, um, been there for each other throughout the course of these last few years, dealing with some of the, the life issues that come up in this, with this commission. And so, um, we're going to continue to be praying for you, and, um, we know that you're a strong woman, and so we just want you to know that we're here for you. Commissioner McCaskill? Commissioner Borum?
I just have something really, really brief. Uh, first of all, I thank, uh, Mr. Shanahan for, uh, joining the team, and look forward to, uh, working with him going forward, and to help achieve, uh, some of the goals that they say they have. So looking forward to working with you, and welcome aboard, sir. Uh, I have an event scheduled for, I guess, this Saturday. It's partnered with FWC. Had the opportunity to meet with, uh, Lieutenant Dixon from the FWC, uh, doing Hurricane Dorian, and kind of expressed, we had some conversation and talking about boat safety, and he kind of, uh, took hold of it and saying he would be happy to do so. Initially, I was going to put money toward it or whatever, but it ended up being a, a free event, so he was willing to come out and do a, a boat safety education, and it'd be this Saturday, uh, from ten to noon, over here, one oh two North First Street. And, uh, we're asking everybody in TV, radio land, if you have a boat, or you thinking about a boat, uh, please come out and, um, get a little bit of this boat education. We're going to be talking about little basic things as it relates to, uh, boating. Uh, just going to talk about entering, navigational rules, safety equipment, uh, charts, global positioning systems, and then it's going to also have, um, some question and answer session, so.
What time is that again?
From ten to noon.
Where?
So I've had a number of people already to kind of, uh,
What's the location?
One oh two North First Street. This is Saint John's River Center. So have a number of people who already reached out and said that they, we happy to come and, and, um, participate in the process, so, um, looking forward to that. I'd like to thank the Palacca Daily News, um, I think the radio station, I think it was air or the radio station. I didn't reach out to them, but it was air or the radio station, but I'd like to thank everybody who's already, uh, requested to come, so looking forward to having an awesome day out there.
I'm coming, and keeping with, and keeping with the theme of boating, just before we do that, Command Sergeant Major, got something for you. Um, if you could, if we could give this to you, if you could come forward for us at this time. We recognize our veterans. Um, you were not here, but we want to make sure we recognize you as well. Sir, and, and just for, and, and just for those people out in TV land, can you tell them, um, what branch of the military you're, you're in and what your rank was?
The, uh, Army, United States Army. I was, uh, Command Sergeant Major, uh, so that was how you can get as an armed division officer. Did forty years.
Thank you. Sergeant James Vickers. And again, he looks like he gets younger every year, so.
Bet he can still pass the PT test.
Uh, maybe. And, um, in keeping with the boating thing, we, we had an opportunity to take a trip to see the Pride of Palacca One. Uh, you guys will get more information on that, um, on the boat, um, and so we'll have some information, I think, within the next thirty days or so, um, as it relates to the boat, to give an update to the commission. Um, and so, the boat's almost complete, uh, substantially completed, we'll put it that way, and so we're, we're still moving forward with that.
You might want to go to Rufus's course, because you might be driving that boat.
Yeah, get a, we got to get a higher seat on that boat, so. But, um, we'll get, we'll get some additional information. We got an opportunity, uh, Mr. Holmes? But we'll get, we'll get some additional information. We got an opportunity, Mr. Holmes, Mr. Shanahan and also Mr. Griffith. We got an opportunity to go down there and look at the boat and actually take a tour of it. And so the, the boat will finally be making its way here pretty soon. And so there'll be some additional float testing, some other stuff that goes along with that. So we'll have more information in the near future. So stay tuned and stay afloat. And Commissioner Borm, we're gonna be, I'm gonna be over at your, at your event because you're gonna have to learn how to drive a boat. So with that, we're, we're just excited about where we are. We got Veterans Day coming up. The parades on, on the eleventh. A lot of events are starting to happen. It's the holiday season in Palaca. And so something for this commission to think about in the near future. Really the epidemic of homelessness in this community. There's a growth of the homeless population. There are a lot of hearts out there who continually help with our, with our homeless citizens who are here and provide services. Many of our merchants do things as simple as even letting folks who are homeless take showers or they feed them on a daily basis. Our church is doing the same thing and some, a lot of the organizations here. And so we've got to make sure that we have a concrete plan in place. And there's an opportunity, I think, to create a coalition of the homeless. First Presbyterian is actually feeding on a daily basis from their, from their hall. And so we just need to all make sure that, from the city's perspective, that we have all the mechanisms in place to make sure that we're conscious of homelessness in this community, the effects of mental health and some of the other aspects that are there as well. And so just kind of keep that on your hearts as we move forward. And with that in place, we are adjourned.